It's seven o'clock at this time. We would please stand for the pledge to the flag. May I get a motion for the approval of the minutes for August the fifteenth?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor use a sign of eye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Let us do the same for the financial report. May I get a motion?
To move. Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor use a sign of eye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Budget amendment coming from Steve.
Yes, that's two budget amendments. First is budget amendment number 2013 dash zero zero two. This recognizes a $24,000 open space grant for the purpose of bodies for a dog park and meadow park.
Any discussion? May I receive a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept budget amendment 2013 dash year zero two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor use a sign of eye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Motion is carried. The second budget amendment, which is 2013 dash zero zero three.
That's correct. It is to seize $496 and forfeit, I'm sorry, to forfeit $496 in seed funds for the purpose of a Venus collar for the occupied parking lot.
Is there a motion?
To move.
And second.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor use a sign of eye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Motion is carried. We will now have the annual planning report coming from Gene Mender, the director of planning.
Section 3.09 of Article 66D of the United States Code of Maryland requires that the planning commission prepare and adopt by the annual report with the level legislated by. The document has been prepared by the County Department of Planning to satisfy that requirement. The format and content of this report covers the development activity that has occurred in the County Department of planning during 2011. This activity includes major and minor subdivisions, resemblance, annexations, special exceptions, experiences, appeals, historic district, board permits, historic district designation, building permits and site plan. The information in this report is presented in a summary fashion. The mayor commissioner's role in this is to review the report and direct any and direct that any appropriate necessary studies and other actions to be undertaken to ensure continuation of a viable planning and development process. And then a copy will be sent to the secretary of the Department of Planning. I have additional copies if anyone in the audience would like some.
Does anyone have any question or comments for Gene? If not, we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Severn Trend of Urban Services.
I'd like to report to commissioners on the operations of the Wasterevenue Plant for the month of July and some of August. July was another good month for the Wasterevenue Plant. The discharge was excellent. We averaged BOD at 4.0 for the facility, total nitrogen at 2.6, and phosphorus was 0.7. Some of the items that we completed, we finally completed the upgrades at well number one. It's been online for about a month, a month and a half, and it turned out real well. It was sort of a joint effort between Severn Trend and Alton DPW. And we upgraded all the chemical feeds systems at well one, and it's doing real well. And of course, AC Schulte did a lot of work on the well itself. We replaced the well pump, and they cleaned the well screen, and it's doing really well. So I'm real pleased with that. Some of the other work that we did, we completed the Wasterevenue Plant Industrial Pretreatment Annual Report in August. That was completed. And we completed the NPDS permit application for the Wasterevenue Plant for the town. And we did that about two, three weeks ago. One of the interesting things when we completed that permit application, we had to go back to January 1, 2009, when the new plant came online. And we had to average and pick the maximum result for all the parameters that we test for. And what I wanted to tell you, significant numbers were the average total nitrogen for the treatment plant since 2009, January 2009, was 2.0. And the average concentration for total phosphorus was 0.08. So I think that says a lot for the treatment facility. The, what else I want to tell you? We had a small accident when we had a chemical delivery at well number three. The truck was pulling in and caught the electrical wires that were hanging down and snapped the wire. And actually, the pole that was holding the wire came down as well. And apparently, it had been rotten to begin with, but fortunately, no one was hurt. And everyone responded excellent. We called 911 and had the police there, but everything was handled fine. No one was injured. And we were, we had the power company there that day, and they replaced the pole immediately. So we were back online that evening when it went down. So I won't give you an update on that, but it was handled really well. That's about it. Sorry. Oh, we had our tournament, our golf tournament. I hope it went well. It seemed like it went real well.
Very well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. Is there any question from the board? If not, then you're dismissed from your position.
Thank you.
Lewis?
I have 162,012 to present for adoption tonight. This amendment provides for the addition of clinic. It defines the word clinic, clinic services, state licensed medical clinic. Also provides that offices and clinics of physicians or dentists with not more than 10,000 square feet are permitted by special exception in certain zones, C1, C2, and C3. Strikes out part of the medical clinics of less than 10,000, adds clinics and state licensed medical clinics of less than 10,000. And it gives a minimum lot area of 40,000 square feet, minimum blindage of 200 feet, minimum setback 40 feet from all property lines, maximum building height specified zone. Off-street parking provides for the application licensure to the state of Maryland for a state licensed medical clinic. All permits and licenses required to operate potentially verified. Fire opening to the public before the special exception approval. Board may impose other reasonable requirements, being necessary to save for the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Waiting areas are provided, interior waiting areas insufficient in size to accommodate one person. Parking space as required areas should be calculated using five square feet for each person waiting. Board adopts this tonight will be in effect in 20 days.
Any discussion from anyone? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance 6 dash 2012.
I'd like to second.
It's been properly moved in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Motion is carried.
So I have.
Old business coming from anyone? Go ahead, Carol.
Okay. There's a piece of property on Main and Delaware Avenue. The hedges, I've called in a couple times to get the hedges cut back because it's hard for you to see when the red light's blinking at night. Sometimes the traffic is coming straight at you. You can't even see it. Coming from Main Street and Delaware Avenue. What's the status on the bridge for the protesting on Delaware Avenue?
Yeah, that's what I had. Status of what? What? No status. Not going in cancer.
The last action by the state was to engage a consultant by being keen, that's a preliminum.
Yes, they're getting ready to bring a consultant on board to do the 10% engineering for that. They'll do some investigation and they'll figure out a cost estimate. At that point, probably approach the town to see what our local contribution will be towards that project in the way of assisting with getting right of way if we need it. And if there's any construction assistance funding that they're looking for through the town.
There's concerns that we still have at night, some, I said bikers. I just say bikers riding at night with no lights, very unsafe and dangerous. And I do know there's a group of kids, it's like four of them, that's riding in the middle of the road. Cars have to go around them. Someone maybe keep an eye on this. So a group of young kids, and I can identify them. I see them. I just can't give them any time to call the police and know which direction to go. But it is very, so, I mean, very often I see them now cutting in front of cars, just riding in the middle, making cars go around them. Next time I see them, I try my best to identify or maybe get the police right there on the spot. The last concern I do have, I do want to say, Friday I took time to go and talk to some of the business owners here on Main and, I mean, North and High Street with this four-way stop sign. I know we're going to be going into a work session, but just for the records, I would like to have a letter that be entered into the records from Dr. Levine's office. Also, for the public, local banks, PNC, Columbia Bank, Cecil Federal. And I even stopped in Mr. Nichols' place just to get some information, what they thought about the stop. To me personally, I think it's unsafe. It's not a good place, location for this four-way stop sign. It's very, very congested during business hours and during school hours. It's just a bad setup. It's an excellent bite to have. Here's the letter. Dear Commissioner Piner, the four-way stop signs, the intersection of North High Street, since the stop signs were put in place, they have eliminated parking for my business, for patients, especially those that are handicapped, who prefer to park directly in front of my office, which allows them a short distance into the building. My office staff has noticed that elimination of the turn lanes has caused problems for the larger vehicles, i.e. buses and track and trailers, making a right turn. At times, the stop signs cause an obstruction for those turning right off High Street. An example, the other day when a westbound vehicle on High Street broke down, this created a huge problem for those behind the non-mobile vehicle. The traffic traveling east on High or from either direction of North Street showed no compassion to their fellow drivers. At times, drivers used the horn unrelentingly, and unfriendly gestures are not uncommon as of August 21st. As for a positive, it is a pleasure not having to wait for the light to turn green and gives those on foot the right of way to cross without waiting for pedestrians crossing signals. Now, on Friday, I stayed there from 1:00 until almost 3:30, just observing myself. It was unsafe for people to walk. The congestion was so bad that it was like that with the bank for Columbia Bank. You couldn't enter out onto High Street because the traffic was so backed up. And the people that were parking on North Street couldn't move because the traffic just kept flowing. You couldn't even come out of their parkway in front of the bank. So I'm just saying, it's a bad setup altogether. I do know there's reasons why the state wants to do this, but right now, whatever the second option is, I would have to say they need to look at that because it's very unsafe and it's not a good thing for the town of Elton.
I was going to bring that up on the new business because I have received numerous, numerous complaints from everyone, whether it's the fire department, the downtown businesses. And I did the same thing as Commissioner Piner did, and he came into my office the day he was out there, and I was there the day before when the county courthouse let out. And when that courthouse lets out, the traffic is unbelievable. It was backed up to South Street, and I believe I took a picture and sent it to everyone. But in the county lot, the people were so upset about it, it was ridiculous. But it really, that is, I believe, the busiest intersection in town. Main and North is not as busy as that intersection because you have the banks, the people walking to the bank, the hospital, the courthouse lot coming out to that road. It's just real. I hope we're able to discuss this fully when the state comes for the workshop meeting because it really is just ridiculous.
I agree with you.
Well, this is supposed-
I'd say another thing just one too, 213 in Maine.
This is, this is supposed to last for like maybe 30 days just for a trial or whatever. But I think if we know that it's a negative and it shouldn't, it shouldn't really last no 30 days because there's an accident waiting to happen. I would say that we need to notify them. They'll know there are concerns immediately instead of waiting 30 days just to see if it's working out. It's not working out.
I personally was almost sized like twice. And I'm very, very cautious there. But I don't know what it is, but just people are not paying attention.
I echo the same sentiments without going into different examples. And first of all, I guess no discussion was presented to us before that went up. And I don't know what the purpose of the discussion after the fact. Lewis, can you give us some highlight on why it's there and if there's a pending meeting as for the lights that is there?
The State Highway implemented this temporary pilot program because they're going to have to remove their traffic signal equipment from Verizon and Delmarva Falls. I don't know if it's Verizon or Delmarva Falls because of the one Maryland fiber optic coming through. There's not sufficient room, so they had to remove their equipment. In lieu of building a new traffic signal, they wanted to determine whether it met the warrants or not. So they had a consultant study the intersection. The consultant came back and disclosed that the intersection did not meet warrants for a signal. So the State Highway implemented the always stop as a temporary measure to see how the traffic would manage. Obviously, to the board's disfavor, it's not working very well. I will notify, with the board's authority, the district engineer and tell him that the town of Elton is again any against the removal of a traffic signal from there. What the state will do is not keep the traffic signal that's there currently, but have to build a new traffic signal. I'm not exactly sure what will happen in that case because the new signal, if they do build it, will go through Officer Traffic Safety, which is a laborious and tedious bureaucratic process that it's sort of processed. And it'll take time for the intersection to be designed for a new signal. We'll use the mast arm rather than the hanging signal. That's kind of old fashioned technology. But hopefully, they can keep that signal operational until they can put the new signal in. Otherwise, it'll probably get a lot-
Well, they should get one.
In order to remove their equipment, they will. They will. They'll have to remove it. It comes from the governor's office.
When the state puts in, did they or are they monitoring the traffic flow? Or did they just put it in and walk away from it? I'm just asking because it would seem to me after a day or two-
Probably have to ask Mr. Reed when they put it in because I can't remember when there wasn't a signal there.
No, no.
He's not talking about the way-
Down the stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did they monitor it?
Yeah, I mean-
They had a consultant. They had a consultant.
No, he's talking about since it was implemented. Is there anyone from the state, is there anyone from the state monitoring it right now?
I can't tell you that. I don't know.
Well, I've been told to tell people to call State Highway. And I have the number in my office, the name to call, and I know someone who did, who came back into my office. And it probably was the wrong information, but it was what Lewis was saying about the signaling needs to be changed for Verizon. But he was told that it was going to be taken down no matter what. But I think the answer is it has to be taken down because of the fiber optics that can't go through it. But a new one does have to be replaced there. And it just has to be.
And as I said before, I thought maybe they should have spoken with us since we have to get the feedback and give it to you, Lewis, and not them give it to them, but-
Well, I'm going to give you some feedback. I've heard enough that I need to get some.
Well, it's unanimous, so you can find out what you can do. Any other old business from anyone?
I just wanted to follow up with Lewis on the list of properties, just in general, the status on that list?
I don't have a list here. I know you mentioned the 127 Quail Court. And the 127 Quail Court that we discussed today has been in the hands of, actually, literally, under control of the Farmers' Home Administration under that sort of-
Well, Craig is here. That's his department, I'm quite sure. Do you have any comments on that, Craig?
I tracked it down to a lady by the name of Willis.
It's been cleaned up.
In her offices in St. Louis, Missouri. She said that she, they did not know that the house was vacant, that the woman died, nor that there was an arson file there two years ago. So I informed her, sent her pictures. And she had, she says she had a group come out that boards up properties for them and whatnot and takes care of it. But they haven't, they have not done anything. I called her back today. And she said, well, they were out to 24th, or they got to give her an invoice to pay on the 24th. And I said, we cut the grass on the 23rd.
Okay, so we get into, okay.
And I said, they haven't done anything to the building. I said, we need to know now, are you going to tear it down or are you going to fix it now? One or the other. So she said she's sending somebody else out from Region 2 or 3 down around DC to come and do an analysis of the property, see if they want to rebuild it or tear it down.
Well, I appreciate you moving quickly on it because it's just kind of heartbreaking when you see the kids that live out in that area and they're just having to play around that. I just appreciate the time moving quick on that.
And the last bit of old business, I guess, Lewis, we had been discussing the recreational center, and there's been money put aside. I see Steve has sought funding for it. Exactly how much money has been earmarked for the erection of this building?
1.5 million.
That's to get it going. I'm talking about the cost to construct it.
There's no money allocated other than the 1.5 million. The board has not made any motions or made any budgets, but any budget amendments to provide any additional funding at this point.
Did you send an email regarding a loan for $2 million?
No, we use that. I'm putting out a proposal conference letter to licensed architects in order to get started on that. And based on the $150,000 square foot, that's 20,000 square foot, we're going to use $3 million as a budget. Of course, we have something allocated. I asked Steve to run a amortization on $2 million just to get an idea. And I think he came up with some money that he'll have as a budget.
What that loan would be like?
If you want to go that way. I don't, I don't know if we can get on a bond issuance or not, but if you can catch a bond at the right time and doing it with a group of people, sometimes you can save money on the interest rate because you have bond issuance fees, council fees, and things like that. If everybody shares in that cost, sometimes you can save a couple dollars. But I haven't contacted YAC or anybody else about that yet because I need to have, before you do that, you need to actually confirm this project. You can't speculate with the state.
We still have to, we still have to kind of figure out, have an idea what this is going to cost to run as well.
Right.
Is it something we should-
I'm sorry.
We can't borrow that.
But yeah, we don't have the bottom line on what is being constructed yet.
Right.
I don't want this to go the wrong way, but there's been some discussion with the YMCA, maybe partner up with doing something with the town of Elton. Again, with the board's permission, we'd like to sit down and discuss it with the manager of the Y. There's been some talk of keeping things the way it is for the town of Elton, for the park recreation, no staffs being eliminated. The programs are still, will be provided if we decide we want to do this. But merging with the Y, which even Mr. Littler brought this up a few months ago, could be a good thing, could be a cost saving. And also, it might avoid us from having to even go the direction we're going. Not to throw things out of proportion, but there's a good thing that was suggested where we can combine some programs and Mary and them can still run their staff the way they're doing. No difference in pay, no nothing exists for a building that we can run some programs out of. So in the future, the next couple of weeks, we'd like to sit down and discuss it with the board and see where we can go with it. Either we can do it or we can't.
And Commissioner Piner, I, you know, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I would like for us to be sure, though, that we look at the meetings that we have with them in the past so we're just not kind of wasting time doing the same thing, that we actually move forward on.
We've never entered, collaborated.
We've never met, we've never met with the, we've never met with the board, I'm sorry, with the YMCA.
Did Clyde Van Dyke meet with them ever or do you want a proposal with them?
No, they said they couldn't get things working. But that's a thing that was suggested in the past, but never really looked at any harder. But I want to commend Mr. Givens because he had really stepped in and made a contact with George Patchell. And I even had a chance to sit and talk with him. We had a chance to say, these are things we'd like to focus on before we bring it to the board because we don't want to throw nobody for a loop thinking that someone's going to be pushed aside and then the Y is going to run programs. It's going to be a collaborative thing where if we get it, sit down and discuss it right, that it could help the whole community.
Now would be the time to do it because we haven't put the money out yet for the engineering and everything, so.
And that's why I suggested to say it tonight instead of waiting.
I think we should have a workshop with the YMCA, invite Mary from Parks and Rec and see if they can.
Well, I have started something.
With the YMCA?
No, with the project. I started the boundary.
Oh, for the survey with KCI?
Yes, because I want to get started on this one. Moving on.
Well, we need to make a decision. Don't, I mean, when did they start that?
Probably an earnest week ago, maybe two weeks.
Maybe they didn't start.
No, they had, there's a lot of paperwork first, you know, the boundary.
She stood up on these facilities.
They haven't done the aerials yet. That's what's expensive.
Right, well.
So if you want to stop.
Does the board want to halt on that and get this meeting taken place?
Well, since it's been talked about, and like I said, Mary hasn't, I haven't even been talked to about this yet because we didn't want to throw anybody out of, any throwing any wrenches in this project. The key thing is, if we want to sit down and make a date, like next two weeks, sit down and talk to them, all we have to do is give the date, sit down and discuss what are some of the options that he would like to throw to the town and where can we help out financially and say, maybe we might not have to build a building. Maybe we might have to add on to the Y or maybe annex them into the town of Elton and then be a part of it. What I'm saying is there's options that need to be discussed before we start making decisions now. That's why I didn't want to say anything.
Well, and then we'd have to discuss it because right now, to be a member of the Y, you do have to join. Our Parks and Rec for town of Elton residents has a whole nother, you know, pay scale as far as being part of all the programs. So that has to be discussed with the Y because it is a county-wide building also.
And Lewis, George Patchell has never presented anything to this town in the form of a meeting about some type of-
My discussions with George were about silvering.
Not any, not any time this year. I'm talking about as an employee, I remember, I remember him actually coming to the town.
He came here for something. I can't pinpoint why.
No, it's okay. I just want, yeah, I just want to, okay. I think-
Yeah, he came here for something.
About three years ago, we talked about, because he opened the gym up, I mean, the cool off on Wednesday to see if we can get some people to come down. It was just a discussion. It was just a discussion.
No, I thought it was an actual meeting between him and, uh, Park and Rec.
I think he and Murray had discussed something, I can't pinpoint what it is.
It was back in the days of Clyde Van Dyke. And I don't think, I don't know if it was even a meeting, but just a thought.
Okay, that's fair enough.
That didn't, didn't.
Or you'd like to set a date?
So we need to set a date and, and, um.
I, uh, I have a couple things I have to clean up here because I formally accepted the proposal for the Phase One work of K C I. And, um, my exact way of putting this, with respect to.
Well, find out what you can do because like I'm saying, this is an after fact, but yet it's beneficial to both entities. Or, yeah.
A decision has to be made one way or the other, though. We can't just keep saying we're doing, we're not doing, we're gonna go here, we're gonna go there. I mean, it just has to be made.
The discussion, if we, even if you already implemented it, Lewis, discussion still can take place. Maybe if it's, if we pay twenty or thirty thousand to K C I, um, for the, for, for the work that they've already done versus three million, that's a, that's a savings for the town of Elton. So let's, well, I'm just, I'm just saying. I mean, we don't just stop just because somebody started doing some survey for us.
I, uh, never do anything about the Y M C A collaboration. I already.
This took place about two weeks.
We understand that, Lois.
Took place two weeks ago, he said, give him time to figure out what he can do, and then we'll try to step aside with the board. I said, before we say anything, we wanna make sure that the board understands that there's no, nothing that's gonna be negative to the town as far as, um, anybody losing position. As soon as I say this, everybody will say, oh, I hear the Y's gonna merge and we're gonna lose our jobs. I didn't want that to go out that way. That's basically why I didn't say it two weeks ago. I wanted him to give us time to tell us what he can do and how it can work for us. And if it doesn't work, then you continue what you're doing.
Then you got a, a comment you wanna offer?
Uh, yeah, the boundary and topo survey, it's still your property, um, that you will probably want to do something with in the future. So, the money's not necessarily wasted for the boundary and topo survey. You're gonna need that whether you decide to put the rec center there, or a police station there, or something else there.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe we might still get a two, three hundred thousand dollar pole barn up to the kids to get out of the rain when they're playing on the soccer field.
So, Lois, you having a agenda to go on at this point?
I need to know when the board wants to meet with the Y M C A. I need to contact George Patchell.
Please do, unless you want us to do it, but we give you that desire to do that.
I'm sorry?
You wanna call him tomorrow?
Yeah, I just need a date to see if he's available.
How busy is our next workshop?
You have State Highway, we're coming in, you have long short term planning, you have a closed meeting first time.
We got a bunch of stuff.
October workshop?
Oh, can we do the next one?
The October workshop, and let, maybe ask him to have some things in writing also on how they would partner with the town.
And he has some, he has some very good ideas, so, so he's got a pool that he doesn't have.
We have a word offer against anything.
That sounds so familiar. It would discuss the board. This sounds very familiar, I'm glad, glad we're going down this road again.
Okay, with that, we will now go to our individual reports, those that we have. I'll begin first asking about the Caribbean, um, social that's supposed to be held. I saw one thing in the paper today, we got an email from Craig that was totally opposite. Craig, can you highlight us with what's going on now?
According to Mr. Walker, he is having a carnival.
Caribbean carnival?
Over there, and he says he doesn't need any permits from state police or the health department. Uh, Mr. Ariano, Ariano from the health department sent a memo over this morning, uh, that he had sent to Wes after reading the paper this morning. And, and the article, and told him that you can't have it.
Now, he, in the paper, it says that he's, he's got all, all his permits.
He has, he has no permits, nothing. And.
Does, does he have something from the liquor board? No?
No. And the health department, again, reiterated that you don't have the permit to do this.
And what if he claims it to be a carnival? What does that, what does that mean?
That's what he's calling it. I, myself, I don't know what to do, I mean, you're still gonna have X thousands of people there. Whether it's a carnival or this extravaganza, it's the same thing, a whole lot of people, uh, in an area.
Well, the carnival, does that, does he have to have permits for that?
No, it's on private property.
Private property.
So if he calls it a carnival, he's okay? What position does that put the town in?
I don't have, we don't issue anything to a carnival. He's not to use the building. He's only, the building was only to be used to sell tickets and for park, uh, use as the bathroom. Nothing else was supposed to be, uh, done in the building. But according to, uh, something Mr. Walker said yesterday, that, uh, when he talked to the state police, that he told them that he was gonna be having many concerts, many concerts inside the building. He can't, he can't do that.
He talking about that big building?
Nobody seems to know what he's doing.
I received a call yesterday, 'cause I had heard it was canceled, but then I received, I was not in the office, but a message saying that it was on. Um, so.
And that's for this Sunday, correct?
For this Sunday, but that's all I know, um.
Mr. Wilson, he does, according to the health department, he doesn't have a liquor license either. For some.
No, he does not.
Well, that's so unfortunate because the writer in the newspaper is usually Karen, and she just had to talk with him recently in order to put what was in the paper today. So in his mind, he is assuming that he's gonna go forth with what he intends to do.
With all permits?
Yeah.
They said that, didn't they?
And my second is, Lois, what is, um, Michelle, what is scheduled for the workshop? Let me say State Highway.
Long and short term planning, you're running a closed session first time.
Long and short term planning.
You know, I, if you wanna do away with that till we get this Parks and Rep, uh, the community building meeting. Because that's gonna have a lot to do with short and long term planning, financially, capital improvements, that type thing. And I thought, when I requested to have that, it had a lot to do with the community center.
Right.
So I would, would not mind if we took it off until we decide how the board wants to move forward with that.
Were we also supposed to address the landlords, where we'd have a meeting with that as well?
Your vacant building ordinance.
That's also.
Anything else? All right, well, so we, we might be able to fit the, uh, the Y in there.
With the vacant building meeting that we're gonna have, Lois, is there any problem that you would think onto the board that you may have a couple of people who rent homes to come in? And give maybe, uh, a short testimony, because none of us rent homes, that's certainly out of, and if you're gonna address issues that are gonna affect them, maybe we need to hear from them as well? People who's been doing this for a length of time?
I can notify these, this is kind of landlord, was it a landlord?
I'm just saying, I mean, we all know people who rent homes, I'm just saying, maybe a couple, like, uh, Dave Willis, or somebody, or somebody, or somebody.
Okay, I'll make, uh, contact some of the town landlords, go see if, um, a couple people will show up.
Okay, that's all we need, pardon me.
Put your name on the list.
And with that, uh, we hear the other reports, uh, Commissioner Hicks, and then Commissioner Jablonski, then Commissioner Piner, that order, please.
Yes, indeed. Now, um, I would like for us to keep in mind that this vacant, uh, property ordinance is not specifically addressed to renters, okay? So just, you know, keep that in mind. Um, on the, uh, the property out at the, uh, the old gas station out at Landing Lane, I saw the double's cut and cleaned up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hope it works, glad.
You had, we had to do that as well? Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how many, you know, were actually cleaned up by the actual property owners.
We, right now, we have approximately a hundred properties that are not being, that are not, uh, being lived in or occupied at all. They've just walked away from it.
Or cared for or anything?
We're cutting grass, we're pumping out swimming pools, boarding up doors, etc.
Yeah.
And they're not just one area of town.
Kinda spread all over. Yeah, they gotta do that too, yeah, the property reservation. One of the things that, um, I know is a concern, um, uh, with that particular ordinance was the, uh, the actual, uh, way was, you know, the way it was written. That it seemed like it would address, uh, individuals unfairly that would, would try to be selling their properties, um, and can't, can't make the sale, um, because of the market and so forth. Um, as part of the discussion, and I actually, I actually forgot to bring that sheet. But, um, I submitted a, a, a copy of, um, I think what they did in Newcastle, along with, uh, what you're familiar with, the Altoona, I believe, Pennsylvania. But, um, off the top of my head, remembering, um, from the Newcastle, um, example. Again, because a lot of this is, is not about, you know, reinventing the wheel, um, we can take a look at what's out there and make the best of it. Um, in those cases, it actually, um, gave exceptions, gave the ability for, for you to, uh, for the, uh, property owner to submit the plan. Um, and, and make the town aware of exactly what was going on, whether it was trying to be sold, whether it was being rehabbed and all of that. Um, so I'll just make sure that we incorporate that and those type, that type of language, uh, into, um, into that, uh, this coming workshop as well. Just wanna make, make mention of that.
Keep in mind, this ordinance has already been drafted. So if there are changes to the ordinance, uh, we, I need to know specifically what those changes are. I've sent that to the board several times without any response.
Well, the, the response, the response was that, uh, the majority.
Would you wanna put in there? I don't wanna put in there, I, I've already drafted it and submitted it to the board.
The response was that they didn't, uh, didn't like it as it was written.
The issue there was, uh, in, in, this is what I brought up, the, uh, waxy property. And, um, it wouldn't change to them because they're not in code violation of the code. Only if they're in violation of building codes with the vacant property required registration. That's one of the elements.
Right.
If it makes clean home, this thing.
But, no, I, I, I'm, I'm.
Apply to the.
I'm clear with that, I understand that.
Violation of the code.
Well, what I.
It has to violate some code.
What I wanna make sure of is that, you know, again, because of the concern, Lewis, was that, that ordinance captured those that were actually in need of selling their homes and, um, and, and, and doing their best to do that, and because of the market can't do it. And I'm, I'm trying to find a way to move forward and protect the town, as well as protect those individuals as well. So, I mean, if it need, if it, if it means that we have to readdress the way it's written, I just wanna make that, you know, if that's a possibility, that we have to do that.
I, I don't disagree, it's word is legislative body that need to tell me what, what language I wouldn't have put in it. I'll send a, a, a subsequent draft out, uh, and all you have to do is in Word, Microsoft Word, so you can, you can modify it or put suggestions in. But I think we don't wanna invite the Eastern County Landlords Association to, uh, discuss the ordinance if it's going to be changed.
So is this what should be discussed at workshop?
That's, that's what I just proposed.
That's what I'm saying.
Rather than continue this evening, we're discussing this at workshop, so that's when it'll be discussed.
Right.
So you wanna Nick's bring them in then, until you get your mouth?
Yeah, they won't have.
Well, there's nothing for them, just to go over.
Right.
That's fine.
What I had planned to do, notify and send them a copy so they contribute.
Right, right, I understand.
If they come in, they're informed.
I understand.
That's fine.
It's just gonna be emotional wreck when they come in here.
Right, and that's, that's why I made the comment that, that the ordinance is not directed to, to, you know, the landlords and, and renters. All right, it's, it's, it's not, not directed to that. I, I'm, I'm.
Mary Jo?
Um, Commissioner Hicks did mention, uh, mention the grass, and Craig, you did, uh, tell what's going on out there. I really think this board should discuss possibly contracting out the, uh, grass cutting part, where we're going into all these abandoned homes. They really, public works cannot keep up with our property, especially the way the summer has been. It's either dry and the weeds are growing, or it's raining and you can't do it. So, I, I real, we're already putting a lien on the property anyway, so I really think we should look at contracting out that part of public works. Um, I think it makes sense because they just cannot keep up on the property, so I, I don't know what anyone else thinks about it, but.
Well, that's, that's, uh, that's another bill.
Well, we're billing the, the homeowner anyway.
We're billing them, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get that money back, but if we contract out.
I'd like to maybe perhaps for discussion with Steve and see, you know, what he, what it looks like with our budget. Because it's overwhelming for our funds.
Clearly, the, uh, as Commissioner Hicks suggests, it's a cashed out thing.
Right.
Now, right now, it's, uh, our labor, we're obviously paid for, whether they're going fast or not. But if you hire contractors, their rate will be higher, and we'll have to pay immediately. Um, so you, we'll have a weakened budget for, uh, cash out later contract.
But basically, it's, it's worth looking into because if they can't keep up now, there has to be another option.
They, they can't, they'll.
They can't.
They, they can't, with the amount of profits.
Just a thought. Um, also, we received an email late today, so I don't know who read it, but it was on, um, the state, uh, it was a request from Commissioner Mullins to light Maryland pink.
Right.
Susan Che Comer. Uh, I think it's a great idea, and Delmarva's gonna supply the twenty by twenty-four pink color film to put over the lights. Um, Nick, he's hoping that all the towns in the county will, will go along with them and, as Maryland tries to light Maryland pink. So, I know, I think the mayor did respond wherever he's at. But, but it came in late, but, um, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but it, it looks like something that needs to move forward quickly. Um, and I, I'll help with, like, when we paint the town purple for Cancer Awareness Month, you know, just get the word out, we're, we're doing the town pink now. Um, and the other thing, we finally opened the Boys and Girls Club here in Elton. The long haul, old house with lots and lots and lots of problems. But we opened yesterday, and I have to say, I was there when the first child ran through the door, who happened to be Commissioner Piner's grandson. No, you didn't. Dominique, and, um, it was great to see kids in the house, and there were so many people, we have to thank. Um, there was so much to do, but we will have a grand opening on September the twentieth, so I hope everyone can, can attend.
Good job.
And that's it.
Before you come, Earl, also, what are you and Steve and, uh, Tanyal is gonna do about Mary Jo's suggestion about the grass? Are you gonna look into the fact and maybe comment up, give a comparison figure, or what?
For contracting?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, I.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry. Thanks.
I really didn't have anything to say, just, uh, did along with, uh, Commissioner Mary Jo's just said about the Boys and Girls Club. Um, my grandson went to the, the school, and we told him he's gonna be going to the Boys and Girls Club after school, and he said, I don't wanna go. Soon as he went there, couldn't get him out. He came home, told him how much fun he had his first day. So, uh, I just wanna say that it's already a good thing because I don't have to tell everybody, two, three more hours, hang around me now, you can go to the Boys and Girls. No, it's always fun to have with me, but, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, I can see where it's gonna be a real big plus here in the town.
He's quite a pool player, by the way.
Okay, so I just wanted to share that, but I, I love, I love helping.
And also, I failed to mention at the very outset that the mayor is on vacation, so that's why he's absent. Um, is there any, uh, comments coming from anyone in the audience?
I didn't sign up, I just.
That's okay.
Just wanna thank Craig for his quick response on a couple calls I had. One of them was, had to do with a safety issue on the corner of two seventy-nine and Gilpin Avenue. First thing I called, State Road, and that's been two and a half weeks ago, I've yet to get a return call. Called Craig, it was taken care of in a very short time. Did a good job. Not only on that, but another issue that, in my neighborhood, that he's taking care of.
Was that that sign?
Talk about the sign first, that's, that's the safety issue.
Yeah, big time.
Right, this, uh.
Thanks for sharing that.
But he got it straightened out like that, where I may made a phone call. But he got it straightened out like that where I may made a phone call, very slowly gave my name and address and phone number, have yet to return the call.
The agenda for Wincity is a closed meeting, a discussion with Temby Ridge, discussion with State Highway, discussion of short and long term planning, and discussion of vacant building registration. Does that mean? And Mary Jo, with the long and short term plan, are you also gonna include the fact that the police department?
Well, I did, but I said if you wanna take that off, we can until we have that meeting with the Y M C A, because that's gonna be a big part of our planning.
So if you keep the Y M C A meeting for this period, then replace that? Is that, is that sufficient for you, Louis?
I'll send a thing to George and for the, well.
Yes.
I think it's important, Mary is here also.
Right. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a request for a closed session, give us a five minute break and we do something. But first of all, we need a motion. Second? And a discussion topic, Norman, is what?
I think employee.
Personnel, thank you. Five minutes, we're ready to begin.